Good afternoon. Welcome to the second meeting of the Town Council Study Committee. As a Tom Dixon interim chair, temporary chair.
Jeremy, how are you? Grab a seat. We're just starting.
Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jeremy Blumer, alternate for FinCom. Kelly Stefan.
Here.
Bo Barber.
Here.
Curtis Barnes.
Yep.
Carolyn Balzer.
Here.
Joe Grous.
Here.
Jeff Carlson.
Here.
Donna Martino.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Uh, there is no staff present. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, we do not have any today. Uh, good afternoon. This meeting, open meeting law of the Town Council Study Committee is being conducted remotely pursuant to chapter two of the Acts 2023. This meeting uh, will feature public comment if somebody is on and the chair deems so. Um, for this meeting, Town Council Study Committee is convened by video conference via the Zoom app posted on the town's posted on the town's website identifying how the public can join. For Zoom meetings, uh, please note that this meeting is being recorded and all attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have provided have been provided. Members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Uh, the chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of the members inviting each name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called.
Yeah, I think we're good.
We forgot the name of the meeting. Just take a roll call from here.
Oh, for items of public comment, after each members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment to those members who have joined the meeting by Zoom. Members of the public who wish to speak must state their names and be acknowledged and speak through the chair. Finally, each vote, vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote as we are live. Turn the meeting over to Joe. He did the agenda.
Uh, thank you. Um, I guess that was the call to order, right?
Yeah.
Um, I guess we have to accept the agenda, right? Second, um, we have to do a roll call.
Yes. Okay, uh, motion to approve and second for the agenda. Jeremy is Jill today. So Jeremy Blumer.
Yes.
Kelly Stefan.
Yes.
Bo Barber.
Hi.
Curtis Barnes.
Yes.
Carolyn Balzer.
Hi.
Tom Dixon.
Hi.
Joe Grous.
Hi.
Jeff Carlson.
Hi.
Donna Martino.
Hi.
Motion is approved. I mean, agenda is approved.
All right, um, we all, I guess we know that the Town Council Study Committee meeting was being, is being recorded. Um, we have no minutes to approve or discuss. Didn't get to those, so we'll have to pass that to another meeting. Um, is there anyone uh, on the Zoom call of the public that would like to make a comment or have any questions? Does not appear so. Think that does away with public comment. Um, election of officers. I haven't really done this before, Tom. Is there anybody, I, I guess my feeling was.
You. Joe Grous. As chair.
I second.
It's not so like. Well, I'm happy to give it a shot. Um, I think we should have a vice chair. Um, I guess we have to take a vote there, right? Does, does anybody else uh, want to or would consider being the chairperson?
May I comment?
Sure.
Um, first of all, I think you bring experience. You're the thing. I think you have the uh, ability and the time to do it and um, in this group, we're, we're all busy and, and I think you would be a great chair. So my vote, aye.
Yeah, may I comment? Um, is that something you wanted to, I realized we didn't ask that question before.
Um, I don't know if I was gonna raise my hand.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm more than willing to do it. Um, as long as we elect a vice chair, just because my concern is as we go through the winter, some of us, and certainly I'm one of them, have some vacation and travel plans, so there may be meetings that I can't get to. So I think we ought to have a a second person who can run the meetings in the case that I can't be around.
May I nominate Joe? Second.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I'm happy with either spot.
All right, so we have a roll call vote for um, myself nominated to be chair and Jeff Carlson to be nominated to be vice chair. We probably do the vote as one.
I think we should probably do it separately, just, just so. Uh, motion to have Joe elected as chair, Jeremy Blumer.
Aye.
Kelly Stefan.
Aye.
Bo Barber.
Aye.
Curtis Barnes.
Aye.
Carolyn Balzer.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Joe Grous.
Aye.
Jeff Carlson.
Aye.
Donna Martino.
Aye.
Chair is duly elected, so let you do the vice chair vote.
All right, uh, so we can uh, elect Jeff Carlson as my partner in crime. Um, uh, roll call vote, uh, Jeremy.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Bo.
Aye.
Curtis.
Aye.
Caroline.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Joe Grous.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Donna.
Aye.
That's still weird though, sometimes.
It does feel a little weird. Um, all right, so I guess we have duly elected chair and vice chair. Um, the one thing I was wondering about and thinking that should we elect a secretary? I don't know what the group thinks about this. Um, because we're not, we don't, we don't have town secretarial support, correct? So um, we can either elect someone to do it or take a volunteer every meeting, but we do need to take.
We need minutes.
We need minutes and we need to keep record of that.
Um, I'll do this meeting. This meeting.
Shall we give a well, I thank you, Curtis. Um, everybody, maybe the best way to do is we just rotate it around the other members and just everybody take a meeting, keep, keep some minutes and so we have notes to put on record uh, in addition to the video. You, okay.
If, if it helps with those too. This will be up on YouTube at some point. It's whatever recording today, so if you feel like you missed a spot or or talking to yourself, you can always catch back up.
Okay, all right. Well, Curtis, thanks for doing it uh, this afternoon. Um, the next agenda item was um, discussion of the meeting schedule and we, we set this meeting up about two weeks, well, not about, it was two weeks after our first one. I thought there was some conversation last time about having meetings every two weeks. Is that?
That's my favorite.
Kind of everybody's favorite?
First one.
We've got to move this along.
Right, well, I think we have to move it along just because I would, I would personally like to see it get on Town Meeting 25, but um.
Well, you know, the select board could put it on this year if we bring a report forward by uh, even February. They, they have the authority to add to the warrant on their own initiative.
We close the warrant on January 24th.
I, I, I think we're looking at it next year, but um, all right. At any rate, so every two weeks, okay, is today's a Wednesday at three o'clock. Is this meeting generally acceptable to, I mean, this, I'm sorry, a Wednesday at three o'clock generally acceptable to everybody? Um, looking at, I don't know my calendar. 2024. If we start the two week cycle. The third, the 10th, the 17th, and the 24th are Wednesdays.
I suggest we start on the 10th rather than the, the third, just because of the holiday.
That's fine by me. Does that work for everyone?
And then every two.
All right, well, how about, what, how about I, how about I do this? Uh, we start on the 10th. I will um, but if I send everybody an email that basically lays out Wednesday, the 10th, Wednesday, the 24th. I'll put maybe what's um, 10 would be 10 meetings out. I don't know how many meetings that's gonna be. That's gonna be five months. It'll be take us to May. So everybody can check their calendars, make sure we've got reasonable coverage on that.
I am um, out of the country February 5 to 9, so I may miss a meeting, but you know.
Well, that's right. I've got, I've got, like I said, I've got a couple of things planned, so um, all right. I will send out a um, a list of the dates of those particular Wednesdays and people can check their calendars. All right, acceptable. Um, section eight was really a, just a summation of a variety of um, issues and questions and discussion topics that everybody, many of you, sent back to me in organizing this meeting. Um, and I guess I was thinking what we, what I thought the meeting of today, the meat of today's meeting would be to sort of go through them and see what people, you know, see what people's thoughts are, see whether it leads to another meeting or another discussion subject. Um.
Joe, I think that this is an important section, obviously, to define the problem.
I can take crack.
Well, but you're, you're, I think Bo, yours was the first.
Yeah.
Your, the, what's wrong with town government is the first thing and you sent that in, so fire away.
It sounds salacious and it wasn't meant to be. Uh, I did agree with the comments on this uh, subject. Um, we are here in my view to strengthen the legislature. And that's what Town Council is. It's a strong legislature. Now, liberal democracy as I see it has problems with the interpretation of the document. It's just the human problems involved in the like literal interpretation of the document that we work by. So the charter, which is not terribly complicated, can be interpreted many different ways by the various branches of government. Now, it says in the charter that the legis, that, that the legislation or the legislation or legislative branch is basically um, that, it's just that. So it has the enumerated power that's given by the charter. In the same way that Congress is set up with enumerated powers. However, it also has implied powers. And that's what I mean. It could be used better. The town meeting could be used better with implied powers. What it's supposed to do, much like Congress, is to push back on the legis, on the executive branch. It doesn't. What it's supposed to do is provide oversight of the executive branch. It doesn't. Those are implied powers. So the enumerated power is here, very vague. But there could be improvements and if we are here to say like if, if, if nothing else comes from this meeting of this group, say the, say the taxpayers say, well, we don't want to change. We'll just stick with town meeting. Like the minimum contribution should be like, we at least find that there's deficiencies and we can improve upon those deficiencies. And that deficiency is that the legislature in Nantucket, for whatever reason, has become sort of degraded and weak. And I think it has to do with apathy. And I think it has to do with complicated governments. I mean, I think government has come to a point where it's become so complicated that it's hard for people to invest their time. And I think that is why we're here. So strengthening the legislature.
All right.
All right, Jeremy, I think the whole point of the rest of the meeting is open discussion, so we haven't go through these, so.
I think everything is right, but I think much of it is derivative of root cause. And so I think the group should probably try and tackle uh, for two reasons, some of the, the, the root problems. One is against the nature of what is the problem that needs to be solved. And secondly, when you do that, it helps in the storytelling to get people to buy into it. If we can actually define what is the root problem. And then from those problems, be they inefficiency, time delay, missed opportunity, um, apathy, complexity, you know, whatever they, those are and many of those things. Then you can come up with a solution, which is really where you're, where I, I would say you were jumping to parship by those solutions.
Hmm.
Sorry, that would be my suggestion. If we could get to what are some of the root causes that, that a change, any change or a change in government can solve. And so there's inefficiency drives people crazy. Time delay drives people crazy. Both of them are functions of any democratic system, but I think maybe we could lay out a list of what are the issues that we seek to resolve and.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna keep my mouth shut. I um, I, I.
You go ahead.
You also, uh, I, I think that's actually a good entree, uh, if you will, Curtis, to your
Yeah.
that we circulated, I circulated earlier today that Art Curtis sent me yesterday.
Well, I have been looking at this for quite some time and, and as I've outlined in what I sent around, um, the, the thing that struck me about a town council is the, it is a legislature and the ability to respond more quickly to the needs of the community. And uh, I freely acknowledge that I'm using Barnstable as a model. And I've been to their meetings and they they are, the town council is the legislature. They meet every two weeks. They bring an article, a situation to the floor, they vote it and move on. And the example that I've used as both the airport and the water commission have lost grant opportunities because we had to wait a year to use money that we had in the bank. We, the retained earnings in the water company, we couldn't buy affordable housing on two occasions. The airport could not accept federal grants because they had to wait for town meeting to approve the release of the funds to match. And so from my perspective, it's a I think the charter, as you say, you could change it to Town Council and move it along, tune it up a little. But the important thing for me is the ability to respond more quickly. And I think that speaks to what Bo's saying and, and everyone else. That's my prediction.
If I can add on to that, I mean, I think that's the, the first, you know, root problem that we have is we're packing all of our legislation latest, like you said, legislative decision making into one day a year for the next year. So we're taking a few 18 months before the last day of that decision making cycle for the, the legislature ends to do that. And I know, you know, especially times of things, but it's I think frankly, that's part of the problem is you can't provide that check and balance back and forth or provide that division, that decision making cycle once a year. It's just not possible to do. No one has a crystal ball that's that good and no one can be that responsive. And for the rate that other opportunities and things come up, you can't be relying upon a single day. And I think that's where the inefficiency comes in if we're trying to we're trying to do that. And then all of the the mechanisms that go with a town meeting between public notice, warrant reviews, publishing, um, limited time period.
This 200 pages repetitive, repetitive, repetitive.
Is, it, it's just not efficient for, for any participant to do. And I think it's really almost it's impossible to expect to people that go to sit in that room to properly prepare.
And Tom just said the warrant will close in January and we do not meet until May. Um, once again, the, to your point.
I just think that's, to me, that's like the part of the base root of that, that problem. It's just.
I also think that, uh, if I may, because I raised my hand, but I guess.
All right, Donna.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I think if we have the meetings, I think the main concern is that we are just not meeting often enough. Once a year just doesn't do it in modern times. There are too many issues. Um, I think if we were to have meetings uh, twice a month, you know, every two weeks, I think also we might draw more um, public interest and involvement rather than have everything just once a year. So the public might become more interested in what's going on, have an opportunity to uh, contribute in their own way as well. There'll be more back and forth if we have meetings twice, twice a month with the town council.
May I comment to that?
Sure.
Great. Um, once again, Town Council. If anyone can go and speak to Town Council, you can't get in the door at town meeting unless you're a registered voter, except for one person. Um, and um, this means to me that we have a lot of people who live here who are not registered voters who have concerns. And they can come and speak at a Town Council meeting. Um, the non-resident taxpayers can have a different voice. So I think what Donna's saying is I endorse that, that there is greater opportunity for a broader spectrum of the community to participate in the affairs of government.
Uh, I was gonna, Kelly, did you ever, I mean, anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, well, just so even if frequency increased, um, are the burdens of that amount of people assembling and the, just the various transportation, all the kind of variables in there? It, is that still a burden, all those variables? And how do we break those up so that? Okay, maybe we are meeting more frequently, but there is, still isn't this kind of, there's so much people in the room that it becomes a burden itself. Caroline.
Uh, I feel like since during the pandemic, there was the allowance made for a tent outside and I, 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 I think I noticed there were therefore more families that could come, more people, people with younger kids could come. Um, and I know people have talked about i- if, if the town could provide childcare or if it could provide that sort of accommodation, um, it would really help us to get more voters and a more representative sampling of the voters. And I'm just thinking if we could accommodate for the pandemic, how come shouldn't we be able to accommodate for the growing population around here? Um, and I see that meeting more frequently is another form of accommodation. It's, it's, we are bigger and we need therefore to have more listening. And I love, I love what's being said about the back and forth. It's like a tennis game with the ball going back and forth once a year. And that's a very boring tennis game and it does not promote, promote that kind of energy of people actually talking back and forth where at um, a, a meeting that happens every two weeks, there are actually conversations that are going on and yes, amongst more different types of people.
I mean, just to throw my own two cents in this conversation is I, I, my view, I think Nantucket is outgrown town meeting. Um, you know, I think the biggest town meeting attendance that I've witnessed in my nine or 10 years of going to them is about 900 people out of something like 9,000 registered voters. So you're really not getting, um, and, and normally after the, whatever the hot article of the particular meeting gets voted on, you know, all of a sudden you're down to three or 400 people because people aren't, don't want to commit the whole, the amount of time. So um, I just think having a town council with whether, with X number of legislators, whatever we call them, town counselors, um, you end up with uh, a, a group of people holding the legislative power, um, dealing on a, you know, a much more regular basis with the affairs of state of the, of the town. Um, and I, I actually think you'd end up with a broader representation of the population of the island because again, nine or 11 or however many people you structure in a town council forum, they're going to represent different parts of the island and have that as their permanent responsibility instead of um, at least in, in my own view, you know, a real minority of the voters of this island show up for town meeting and generally, and this is my own impression over the years, is there are sort of a core people who they go and they want to exert their will on the town. And so Nantucket kind of gets the laws and the articles approved that this sort of core group of people who like town meeting, um, want to elect and the 8,000 other people who may have a different opinion, don't really know. Um, they're too busy to show up or they're, you know, they're, they have families, they have jobs, whatever they'll let it, whatever, excuse me, whatever the heck it might be. So I think that from a pragmatic point of view, our, our job is to come up with um, um, a, a model of Town Council, you know, whether it's a charter or, or some other legislative document and a communication and or marketing plan to the town as to why this is a good idea for the town to do. Uh, because frankly, if we don't, I think if, and I think I said this last time, if we don't spend almost as much time thinking about how we communicate it and sell it, it isn't going to pass town meeting because you certainly know that um, whenever this article that we're supposed to, to, supposed to create gets to the town meeting, the people who don't want to change will definitely be there. Um, so we, we're gonna have to encourage people who generally don't come to town meeting to come and vote in this direction.
What is our understanding of the people who don't want it to change? What, how do, how does this group understand what that resistance or pattern of resistance is?
I'm sorry, Donna. Yeah, Donna, did you have a comment before I switch?
I do. Um, I wondered if now is the time to bring up the idea of a consultant. Because we don't want to reinvent the wheel. It's already out there. So I, I leave it to you, Joe, when you do want to bring up the idea of consultant.
Well, just to react quickly to that, I personally don't think we need a consultant and, but I'm gonna turn to Tom here in a minute because I think he has a different view, but um, but, but I say that because I would approach our, personally, I would approach our task on a much more, much shorter timeframe and more direct basis. Personally, I would go to the town of Groton or I forget, you know, um, uh, I think it was Andover, it was Amherst, it was in that video that I watched on the um, Massachusetts Municipal Association. Personally, I would, I would find a representative uh, Town Council Charter. I would go through it and try to see how it applies to our situation here in Nantucket. Um, discuss and debate some of the specifics. How many town counselors, uh, do they get paid? I forget because, you know, there, there are a bunch of specific items. And come up with something that we said, that we could all feel comfortable is, this is a reasonable model. May not, may or may not fit, you know, solve every problem or, or address every issue, but it's something that we could use as the converting from Nantucket Town Meeting to Nantucket Town Council. And then we could spend some time about how do we communicate this to the town and um, the model I use there is, you know, what Michael Kozart did four years ago to raise the funds to build the, the new grammar school. I mean, he spent a year and, and he, and this model is us. You know, we, we could spend months out there talking to, you know, homeowners associations and what have you. Um, because if we don't do that, I don't think it's gonna pass town meeting.
And I think.
Um, can I just continue with that?
Sure, sorry.
Um, I'm not.
Not sure I'm managing the debate here very well, but.
I know, yeah, because I'm up on a screen, I gather, yeah. Um, I'm not suggesting a facilitator. I'm suggesting a consultant to just perhaps guide us. We do have funds for that and they could probably help us achieve our goal um, more quickly. Because they've already done it. For example, Joe, I know you uh, listened to the um, webinar from the MMA.
Yeah.
As I did, and Michael Dutton was one of the panelists and he's offered a Bridgewater, he's the town manager of Bridgewater, Massachusetts. He also was, um, I think town manager prior to that of the vineyard. So he's offered to come and speak to us. Um, I mean, we do have, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying we do have um, uh, sources that could aid us in reaching our goal faster.
Tom, I was.
Just a thought.
Go to you, so, but thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
You, you, what do you think about a facilitator, consultant? Some sort of expert?
So I think it, it depends on what the committee's goal is. If, if we stipulate for a second, it's sort of what we were, what some of the members of this committee were talking about before, which is to have some sort of document for, for argument's sake, spring meeting 2025, right? A, whatever you call them, a facilitator or an expert or somebody who is well versed in Massachusetts municipal government is going to have to come in to, to write that document. I, and make sure that it's okay because it affects. I, and make sure that it's okay because it affects so many departments. You know, we, we are, we are this little spit of sand thirty miles out to sea, but we have a giant budget. Many, many departments, a lot of moving parts, uh, how it affects all the boards and the, the finance and. You know, we had to talk to Sarah, the moderator and the town clerk and the, the, there's, there's a lot here and, and I agree. In some respects that it may be as easy as looking at Amherst or one of the other towns and say, yeah, this applies, but. Um, you know, I, I, how, yeah, also we're a county as well, so that, that changes a, a lot of things, so. My take on it as a citizen, right, not as a select board member, but as a citizen would be to look at one of these facilitators in this list. Figure out what, what we want to get out of this committee. Um, see if they're available to, to help us draft whatever comes out of this committee, if anything, right? And then, and then proceed with that.
Sure, Curtis.
Um, I talked with John Giorgio about this question. And John said, we are experts at do, at creating charters. The, the talent is already in the, uh, town council. Um, councillor's office to do what we want. And, uh, wasn't our speaker from Amherst, one of the KP people who?
Lauren Goldberg.
Lauren, yeah, but John Giorgio says we have all the expertise to draw your counsel.
I would advise not to use John because he's, he represents the executive and that's, I think that's a conflict, but. You were there in two thousand and seven. And the charter change went up. He was there and they used Paul. Town, the town.
Yeah.
Council at the time.
Yep.
I think there are plenty of people at the MMA that would, would take this on. And if we just hire one, just as a legal consultant. I think that's fine. I, I mean, that would be.
As long as we got the right, yeah, yeah.
Caroline, I think.
How do you, how did you feel about Lauren Goldberg? Because after the meeting ended last time, I asked her about. Her availability and what her role was and what she could offer. Obviously she knew a lot and she said that she does. She offers the putting together of the thing at the end.
I'm sure KP Law is incre, I mean, they're great, they're everywhere, all over Massachusetts. Um. I'm just saying that maybe the best way to do it is to have independent, just to go independent.
I mean, I, I agree with all that. I, I think, you know. You're gonna need a legal counsel for this, it's something like, whether it's KP, Anderson Krieger. Luntorax has been here before, there's a million municipal councils in Massachusetts. I, I don't think getting the legal review is going to be. The hard part of doing it. I think, Joe, you touched on it a bit, it's. How do you educate the public to do that? And I think, you know, when I was looking at the list and did some research on those consultants, I think. The, I always get the name wrong, the Collins Center out of, out of UMass. Is partners with MMA. They edu, they've done education in multiple communities to help roll this out, right? They have lessons learned on lessons learned for how to educate. The public in communities to make this change and to do that. To me, I think that's the value of, of facilitator consultant in this case, isn't to do the legal review because at some point. You're gonna get legal review whether you want it or not, you know, draft a document. And if it's gonna go into the charter, I guarantee you that. Top administration and the pincom are gonna have a turn, kick at it because they do that with every article, because that's what they do. That for our role. I think finding someone that can help distilling that information down to people and have been successful doing that. Is the greater value facilitator because I'll only speak for myself here and someone who has a lot of experience with town plans and initiatives. That's always the part that we struggle with the most is educating people. And if you can find people that can help and have expertise in that. That's worth more than any legal review ever.
I would say it goes deeper than just the public. Because you're also talking about the town employees and their different committees who are related to that.
Yeah.
And if I understood, and I'm, obviously I haven't, have it in front of me, but. They also could help us and say, well, these are your next questions. So if you're going to a council. These are the next decision-making things that you need to decide. And then once that document is drafted, KP Law is gonna be looking at it anyways to. Verify it, to verify the transition like you're saying.
Oh.
But it helps us. Get the original thing and to know what it is that we are trying to adjust, really.
Which I.
And KP Law isn't really gonna.
Right, it gets back to what I started with. What is the root problem that we're trying to solve?
Right.
And if we can define that with good storytelling, then you can sell it. But wait, that's what you need to do. Everything will flow from that, it won't be easy, but it will flow from that. So we've got, the government is. This town now deploys over three hundred million dollars of capital here to various things. From capital projects to budget and, and other. That's a lot of money. That's a hell of a lot of money for pure democracy. We've defined it inefficient, the timing problem, lots of stuff. So anyway, I'd encourage us to spend some time on what is the root problem? And what would a different form of government do to change that root problem? Once you've identified that, then we figure out, you know, all the things to copy from the rest of Massachusetts. That, that's my perspective.
Well, I mean firstly, I, I think the problem is already just, just fairly obvious that we've outgrown. Town meeting and, and I, I would personally like to just lead to. Kind of creating a town council charter and sort of doing the, the, the bricks and mortar, if you will. But I don't know, maybe everybody doesn't feel that way. I mean, you know, and, and I, I, I know that Curtis probably feels more like I do, but. The rest of it, I mean, are we already, are, are we as a committee at the point where we say, well, we're, we're. Town coun, town, town meeting is sort of the problem is. It's antiquated, it's inefficient, it's not frequent enough. Um, it maybe doesn't represent people, the town well enough. We need to go to a town council structure. Like I said, I'm sort of at that point, but.
Joe, may I?
Hang on a second, Bo, Bo first, Donna, then I'll let you go.
Okay.
Go into the construction of the document. You'll probably pull from. Areas you'd like about what we have and then areas you'll, you'll naturally compare. And that's probably when a lot of the. Hey, we don't like this stuff. Comes into play and where you say, okay, we're gonna change it this way. So that, that conversation is gonna happen. It's gonna happen in the construction. So I think probably right, we probably just say, look. Let's start working. And then all this stuff's gonna come up.
But yeah, Donna, I think you're next.
Uh, thank you. Um, yes, I do agree with you, Joe and Curtis. I think we've already identified the problem. And I think we need, I do think we need a consultant. Um, but that's my opinion.
My only question is, will that delay us? Do we have to do an RFP and go out and do all kinds of things? That will take two or three months to get a contract, to select a board, have to approve. Hiring that or? If we want a consultant. I don't want it to delay us three months just figuring out.
Just picking out who the consultant is.
I, I've just lost track about how we persuaded ourselves that a consultant is a good idea.
We're not in favor of it.
I, I, but, but you, I guess we have to do it. So what, again, why, what, 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 how does a consultant help?
Jeff, go ahead.
I'll, I'll go ahead because I was the one that was kind of advocating for one specifically. I, I think our biggest struggle is going to be asking the people in this room and on here. To effectively educate all of the potential voters. People in the town, town employees, town staff. About what the change and the nuances of the change are going to be. And what the potential pitfalls are, what the pluses are, what the minuses are. I just don't. I don't feel like that's setting us up for a successful discussion or ultimately to be successful in the end. I think. Having people that have gone through that process before. In multiple locations, that there's a lot of. Knowledge to be gained in how to effectively do that. Because I think right now. I know I, I personally talked to a lot of people about this for. Yeah, I know, I feel like I've been talking about this for like two years now, just kind of independently. Most people don't truly understand how, one, how our government currently functions, how it's supposed to function. And what these changes are going to be. So you're really starting at a base level to try to build up to a point where you can put enough people in the room at town meeting. And prevail by vote, especially against the significant portion of the. You know, current crowd that's probably going to vote against it because they have a, you know, a very romantic feeling about what town meeting is. That. You're only going to overcome it by. Good public information, good outreach. You know, involvement with people and. I'm just not sure. That you can ask a group of citizen volunteers to take on that burden. Completely to themselves and expect it to be successful.
Well, alternatively, what if we, what if we did take that on? What if in? In our participation in this group that is part of. Our job, that in our conversation that can be heard by the public or in our. And I mean, each one of us is probably out there doing the research, whether it's for two years or however long and. And isn't that part of that process of? Aren't we helping the people understand what we have now and, and what might be more optimal? And, and a consultant, if we get a consultant. Um, is that person telling us how to do that more effectively? Or is the consultant taking what we come up with and then helping us, if you will, to PR it after? After the fact, and that's maybe, that is maybe a PR person.
Um, I'm sorry, I was just, I, 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 I gotta make a comment, Donna, and I'll let you and then Jeff, um. I did find myself in some of Donna's and Jeff's comments sort of changing my mind on this whole idea of a consultant, certainly in the, in the sense of, um. Getting, whether it's one of these town managers or I can't remember if this Michael Dutton is a current town manager or.
Yes, he is.
He's a current, but you know, having someone who's gone through this, um, who's, you know, helped manage the process of going from. One form of government to town council form of government. Um, you know, I think could be good, um, education for this group and, you know, as Tom says, this is. It's a pretty big organization and so, you know, I, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be so cavalier to think we can sit here with the town charter and. Mark it up ourselves and, and be right, you know, that's probably not, it's a little, it's a little, uh. Um, egotistical to think I could, we could do that. So. You know, maybe a, um, uh, an idea for one of our meetings in January would be to get. Whether it's Michael Dutton or I don't know, there, there are other professionals out there who'd be willing, willing to talk to us about. What is, what is the process that they went through? You know, sort of what are the resources needed? What is the time that it took? Um. Would put us in a better spot to actually, you know. Manage, you know, attempt the process.
Okay.
I would like to hear from somebody that we have.
I'm sorry, I've actually, Donna.
Yeah, sorry, it, it is awkward on Zoom, but I appreciate it. Um. Michael has already offered to, to, uh, speak to us and that would be a really good time for us to ask specific questions. And Curtis, in response to your concern about, um. Uh, losing time, um, these people were recommended, um, I think in consulting with. Um, MMA. So. They are. Maybe they've already reviewed them, I don't know, but the, these names didn't just pop out of the air. So MMA is aware of what we're doing, they're, um. Willing to assist us, there's no charge, and I do think it would be very important and very helpful. Um, and very efficient time-wise, Curtis, if we had somebody who was, who's already been doing this. And who's offered his services. And, and then we take what we want. And as far as a consultant, that's why I think there's a difference between a consultant and a facilitator. A consultant works for us. We're driving the bus. And I think that's an important distinction to make. Thank you.
Rachel, I think I could go on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we need a facilitator at all. I think what we need is. Somebody else who's like to come to speak to us, like this person that can say, here's. Lessons learned, like. I mean, we've been talking about a different project and, you know, the hospital that was built. They said, you know, if we had to do it all over again, we would have done X, Y, Z. I think that is where the benefit of these people will certainly come into play. I am with Jeff, I like the idea of the, the Collin Center because they have a framework, they've already done this with numerous charter changes. And they can help with the transition plan. They give us. The framework to say, these are your decision points. And then we go from there, but hearing from people who have. Done it in real life and have the real life experience versus here's your paperwork. Here's your decisions. There's two different values there, but as a facilitator, I don't think this group needs a facilitator. I think we just need to hear from people. We just need to. Understand that.
Does Curtis's question still stand? Do we have to go through the RFP? Do we hire them? I mean, this is, does it add more time to this?
Well, I mean. Speaking personally, I think if we call up the MMA and, and say, is, is Michael Dutton free to, you know, address our meeting on? January fourteenth or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he says, yes, I don't, I'm not sure why, and it's, and it's free. I'm not sure why that gets us in, in hot water with the town, but.
No, doesn't.
Tom, you're the, you're the select board member. I mean. I think if we were gonna go out and wanted to hire somebody. Tens of thousands of dollars, we'd have.
Be the same thing with the SDR group. Yeah, we, we'd have to go to town and, and then. Um, maybe it's probably.
So as long as we can get sort of.
And then SB.
Friend, friendly. Professionals who'd be willing to, you know, contribute their time for free or. Modest expense, which is probably.
Yeah, man, I just. One, one example of why I think somebody like that would be really good is that. I think we've been a little, um, talking about kind of presupposing that this is spe, special municipal. Legislation like a home rule petition instead of a charter commission. And if you work, if you look at both ways of doing this, there are benefits and pros and cons to doing both. Um, and I think, like, I can give you my opinion on it, but somebody like the town manager from Bridgewater has, has stated or the Collins Center. Would be the kind of person who could like really drill down on that. Um, because I'm not, I'm not sold that the, just personally as a voter, that the, that the home rule petition is the right way to go. I'd just kind of throw that out there. Um, i- if, if, if the town, if, if the will of this committee and then the town is to really do this, I, I'm not sure that's the best way of doing it, but. You know, those, these are things we can talk about.
So just to kind of piggyback on that again, I, I think part of it too, and I, I think the benefit of. Having someone to help with that outreach component too is ultimately, this decision's gonna go to the state house for decision. And I think having an independent. Party be a part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Lends an extra credibility to help pass through the state legislature as well. With, with ever track we go, because it's gonna have to visit there and they made the Senate right back, but I think. That helps check a box for them that may not slow it down because they may say, hey, there's a credible review from this source. I think we'll send it back to the voters and let them decide. We think that's fair. But I, I think there's lots of steps along the way that we can still be doing. While we're looking into, if we have any of those we're interested in. Um, clearly, the town manager at some point compiled that list, has done some level of inquiry with them. There may be more to this inquiry than what's listed there, including. Potential costs, production proposals, I think squaring away that procurement piece is easy. But there's still lots of work to be done while that's being resolved that this group can do. And I, I, I think from my perspective, and I, I hear everyone for, for time and wanting to do it quickly. But I think there's also something to be said for. Doing it quickly, but also making sure that it's putting our best foot forward the whole time. And if that takes an extra three weeks, I think that's worth the time in person.
I would just point out one, one little thing is that a charter commission does its work in either. Ten months or eighteen months and then it goes to the ballot, not town meeting. So it just, there, there are multiple ways of doing this.
Clearly a longer, it would take longer.
Yes, but that may provide a broad base for the community to get behind it. I'm just throwing that out there, that's all.
Well, and they, I think the other. A, a technical problem is I don't think this committee is a charter commission, right?
No, you, you would have.
We have to, you have to, you have to elect a charter commission. We're, we're a study committee.
Yep.
So I guess I've been going on the impression that the only path we've got is special legislation.
Well, I'll say, I believe to start that charter commission, you also have to collect the signatures of.
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, fifteen of registered voters, so I mean, you're essentially dialing into that point. Probably about eighteen hundred signatures of registered voters to even initiate that process, so.
Right.
I'll rely on that, would take to collect, also we.
Well, it is, it wouldn't be twenty twenty five, that's for sure.
Yeah. Totally, I'm ju, I'm just saying, I, I just didn't want to, you know, presuppose that we, that that was, that was the right.
I was, I was presupposed.
Okay.
What's the trigger for prolonging this time span of the twenty? Of your, that you're talking about? What's the trigger that activates having to go past possibly twenty, bringing an article in twenty twenty?
Of you, that you're talking about, what's the trigger that activates having to pass possibly twenty, bringing an article in twenty twenty?
What, I'm sorry.
I thought you were saying.
January twenty fourth is when you close.
Yeah. Yeah.
Again, I'm, I'm not an attorney, uh, but I I think what we're, what we're talking about is. The paths to actually get this implemented.
Yeah.
Is either a charter commission. Which has all these other, you know.
Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff, steps to go through, eighteen hundred signatures, blah, 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 seems to me that would be a multiple year. You know, process, or we can simply, we're a study committee and we can um. Basically, it's like a home rule petition, you, you have special legislation that goes to the state house and that still could take more than a year, but um. In theory, I think it seems to me we could actually get an article before town meeting in twenty twenty five. Um, under the special legislation route. I don't think we could if we had, if we, cause we are not a charter commission, it would. You'd be, you'd be launching, launching a, you know, process, another group of people. Before.
Yeah, that's enshrined in in MGL, that you, you have to go through a whole.
Can we just explore the time constraint issue? I mean, there is right now, this January month or two months. From the way it exists today, can that process be changed?
No, I mean, that there's probably some leeway that the, but, but it has to go to the, the. This, I'm not the right, right person, but just my anecdotal experience as it has to go, I know that it has to go to the printers by a certain time by law. And it has to be presented about to the voters, has to get in the mail, it, it's, it's pretty. That, that process is kind of locked down. Um, there might be like a week or so where the select word has some time to put something else in, but outside of that, not much.
So it's a luster.
I, I would personally say, if I may. The only other alternative path would be to put it together and then call a special town meeting. To deal with it. Well, there's, there's deadlines that go with signatures and collection of signatures with petition for a special town meeting, and that triggers its own. Set of timeline and hurdles that go through that, but you could move independent of annual town meeting. Like what we did with short term. Here to do it. I think the question you'd have to ask yourself strategy wise is bringing a significant change forward like this. At a special town meeting, if that's. A good idea or not, but that's a whole discussion.
So let us say that we did that. Okay, and and that's a good reason not to do it, but we're one to do it. How long did we should it take this committee to find best practices? Tailor it to the Antucket reality and come up with a recommendation, how long should that take us?
That document's not that complicated. I mean. Well, again, I I'm perhaps, I'm, I'm, in fact, I'm sure I'm being naive. You know, because there's probably a lot of, a lot of stuff below the surface when you take the charter and. But I I naively think that we could go through this and say, you know, clause one. Does that work for a town council? Yes, clause two, I, you know, I'm making it up, right, I'm not, I'm not looking at it. But I'm sure that it's not, you know, it's gonna be a multiple week process to. To do that, and you're gonna, you're gonna, and you're gonna need, I would think you'd need legal. Advice because we would be naively, you know, editing this document um.
Doesn't this go back then to getting uh, one of the MMA people to talk first?
Well, that's, that's kind of what I've been mulling over as our conversations going around is. You know, I'm not sure we really know enough at this stage to make some of these. You know, certainly in my case, naive judgments about how quick we could do this. Well, you know, it seems to me a terrific next. Terrific subject for one of our next meetings would be to get one of these people to come talk to us, like who've actually gone through a conversion. At least as a place to start, you know, about your.
So separation of powers, I mean, I I think it's pretty easy to break down this document. And say, look, these are the powers. Separate them out, that's government one on one. And then to say, look, all these are listed right here. And who gets what? And I think honestly, you just look at other towns and say, well, this is how they do it. And you could get the bare bones document. And then you can run it by legal and I think it's, I think if we break it down enough, we could just piece by piece go through it.
Yeah, I, I really would encourage us to um, to spend, if we could, the next meeting. And listen to either um, Michael Dutton or someone from MMA, just. Just to kind of give us a little more information, educate us a little bit more about a direction we should take and so forth. It's only one meeting.
Well, how? How about, how about this as a, as a suggestion? I'd be happy to call the, it is, does Mike, I don't remember him specifically, does he work for the MMA or is he a town manager at one of the?
Town manager. Of Bridgewater, Massachusetts now, and as I said, he was also town manager um, at the vineyard.
One of the vendor towns.
There's six towns.
How about if we do this? How about if I reach out to him and see if he'd be willing to attend one of our meetings via Zoom? Uh, talk to us about his experience in terms of um. Converting to a town council sort of form of government. And then I think maybe for the other January, that's maybe the first or the second January meeting, depending on his schedule. And then the other thing is, why don't we um, why don't we all take the, the charter document that Jeff has shared with us? And take a meeting and walk through it. You know, you, we may learn something about going through this page by page and in terms of whether it's really as easy as. Bo and I seem to think, or not.
Find a different place.
You know?
That's a good idea.
It, it, it can't be as easy as find a replacement, right, there, there's just too many pieces to the town, but. It would be educational for us to go through it and say, oh yeah, this, this affects this, or this affects that.
Can we also call the Collins?
Yeah, sir. May I uh, go back to something I raised earlier, which I'm not sure that we, we rounded back up with, which is. Devil's advocate, what are the objections, what are the resistances? Could we lay those out as we understand them to changing over? Cause we keep saying, well, you know, we have to make sure that we can persuade. People of what we're recommending and we're have to get the buy in and we're have to educate people. And so having a, having a shared understanding of what the resistances are going to be would be helpful, I think.
I think I can illustrate the resistance, the resistance is gonna be the loss of de- of direct democracy, where you go to replace and you have this. Idea of. You know, direct democracy and. In the Madisonian sense where you get the, you these three, sorry to be very tight, but.
That's cool.
Um, you get these three, you get these three forms of government represented in one. So you get monarchy, town manager, you get republic, it's like word. And then you get the direct democracy and all those three forms of government, I mean, the American way is to, to. Put them all in one and then let them kind of fight. And people are gonna miss that. So, yeah.
I, I don't mean to, I don't mean to push back on that, but, but comparing the town manager position to a monarchy is, is so. They were to us.
Yeah, no, 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 it's, it's not, it's not, I'm sorry. We, the way we did it is to set up as the executive branch. To have town manager. And the elected officials. Right, and that's, that's the way that this checking balance works. And that's, you know, it's set up in our charter and that's actually probably the way that like a ton of towns do it. I'm not, I'm just saying that, like, the proverbial way that we've set up. American government is to have all these things represented, these three forms. Represented. And you sort of put them together and you let them kind of. Just check each other.
Find their way.
Right, find their way, check each other, I mean, and that's, and that's the way it was set up from.
So part of our hurdle would be to get those people who are still very much attached to having their vote count. At town meeting floor or have their say at town meeting floor is understanding how they can still have that say in a new form of government. Which is essentially going to like the meeting or the council meeting where they make those. And the same thing on a smaller micro scale.
Right, I would say it's actually better because what you're doing is you're. In this smaller setting where you don't have group dynamics.
Hillary has her hand raised.
I think you have.
If you want.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Bo, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I can't wait, I'm just glad to be noticed and I'd love to say.
All right, Hillary, I didn't, I didn't even realize you were, we had a member of the public out there, so um. Yeah, did you have a question where?
Well, I do actually have a question and um, so I, I did listen to the last meeting and I'm really happy to be able to listen to this meeting too. And my question is just, is there, does everybody at the table, is everybody? Of the mind that a town council is the best form of government, of, I mean. Obviously, everyone's interested in moving to a representative government, I don't know, maybe some people want to stay with open town meeting, it doesn't sound like it, but. Of the forms of representative government, is everybody at the table quite sure that a town council is, is the best form?
I am.
I am.
Criticism.
Anyone unsure that a town council is the best?
Well, I think that's part of what we're talking about. The right way, is it representative, is it council, but I, I. That was good, it's sort of in a way be my question is, I don't think we have, to your point, I don't think we have anybody here who's saying, why are we even changing it? I think everybody's saying we should, but to what? So do we need somebody to come and talk to us about why they think town meeting works just fine for an Antucket? But I think the reason why we're all here is because it's sort of been established, back to Joe's point, that town meeting is. Not working for an Antucket, so what is it? I, I, and I did best part of a meeting in the very beginning, so I apologize, so I don't know if that was already said.
Well, I, I have to, just to respond to Hillary's question, I mean. I, I, I am personally, I was attracted to this committee and I signed up for this committee. Basically because of Curt- Curtis's article and Curtis's article and for town meeting last year was to form a committee. To, to compose an article to convert to town council. It wasn't to form a committee to discuss whether we should have a mayor, you know, town, city council form of government. It was to do this fairly direct job, which I happen to agree with, I think, I think town meeting is outmoded, which I've said it about twenty times today, but. So Hillary, I, I didn't see that the, the charge of this committee uh, was to debate whether it's. You know, town meeting, town council, representative town meeting, or city, you know, city mayor or city council mayor form. It was to form a town, to create a town council article for a, a, a future town meeting.
So I'll.
I don't know if everybody else agrees with that, but that's, that's where I was coming from.
Can I, I just wanted to make a follow up comment and um, I. On my interpretation of Curtis's article is that the group is to study town council. And I don't think you can study one thing without studying the alternatives and um. At this point, you know, I did volunteer to be on this committee, I wasn't selected, um, but I will be voting on it and. I think that you're going to be best able to convince um, the group of voters about the best outcome. If you've wrestled with various alternatives um, as part of your journey of getting there. And I just think you can't study something and come up with a really good defensible. Um, you know, you're gonna have people who really, really disagree with you and ask you a lot of questions and you want to be able to answer them, so. I think, um, you know, having some kind, being able to say to the public, like. We made this Gantt chart that had these different steps in our process and step one was going through, we looked at. There's three hundred and fifty one towns in Massachusetts, you know, this many have represented town meetings, this many have town councils. We um, we studied how they, you know, how effective are they, we talked to people. Um, I, I will personally volunteer to ask my friend who's a member of the Brookline Town Meeting, which is a two hundred and fifty person representative town meeting. To come in and talk with you, I just think that um, to be, you may feel quite confident. And I know everyone feels there needs to be a change, but being able to tell the public, like, we went through a study period. We went through an analysis period, we went through a recommendation period, then we had some Q and A sections, we took over, you know, four fairgrounds. And we invited everybody in and we got their feedback, I just think that's gonna be a really um. Defensible way to go, uh, and I wanted to contribute that, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Rachel asked the question, um, I don't, we answered, which is what are going to be the objections out there? And there are a lot of people, I believe, come with this thousand beast person meeting. And it's a one or two nights a year sort of entertainment. And they enjoy doing it and you're gonna take that away from them and many of them, you know, are not gonna like that. And so I get back to what I started, but tonight, at seven. We have to delineate what it is we are going, what is the problem? And I know that everybody cools together and we need to unpack that. And I, I too know there is a big problem, many problems, and we need to change, I understand that, but in order to sell it. We need to come up with, called the elevator pitch, what are the five, what are the half dozen things we are going to solve for? And then you get to Hillary's point. Okay, here is the problem, here's how it's ranked. And now we have looked at six different ways to solve those particular problems. We need to demonstrate all of that because it's not just, we're gonna get a consultant, find best practices, write up a legal document, don't invest it. We're, we're gonna have to demonstrate there was a process, there is gonna have to sell, we're gonna have to sell to all these people. And Rachel, to your point of what, what, where are the impediments gonna come from? There are a lot, they're gonna be completely emotional, they're not gonna be rational per se. And so I think the best way to do that is. Here's, here's how the existing thing fails on five or ten situations. Well, well. It's currently an implied representative form already. If you really think about it, I mean, you have the extroverted people who are out there and on the front lines talking. And they have their networks. And, yeah, you can make an argument that we just move to that system formally. Instead of what it is now, it's just. But I think Hillary's right, I mean, you gotta, you have to sell it and you have to have a process. All right.
Sure, Anna, hang on a second, I think Carol had this text.
Well, so I think this conversation right here is, we're all saying, yeah, we do need to make ourselves aware of. What the pushback is going to be, the objections and what people are valuing about the old way. And I, yeah, I mean, I know some of those things and we all do, but I think it would just be good to put it all into the basket here in between us so that. We are all solidly aware at the same time. And that we review that because some of it will be emotional, but some of them are gonna be very specific things and. For us to all have that in real time and to be able to understand it and respect it, I mean, we are, we do need to respect it. Because in a way, our committee um, is, we're, we're attempting to be representative of what we're hearing and knowing. That's out there, not just, you know, our individual views and so. I would love it if we all just kind of threw out the things that we understand that are going to be the resistances and the objections. So that we're all aware of it together and holding on to that together.
You suggesting that now, or you should just?
I mean, why not, yeah.
If I can, cause I, I, hopefully, I thought it's that a little bit. We're really like, regardless of issue, we're, we're fighting holistic change. Right, and there's gonna be a million people that say, I'm, I'm losing my individual freedom as a, a voter to go and save my peace. Do it need to, even though they may still have the same opportunity in a different form of government, right, it's, it's change and it's. Yeah, I think we've all been out here long enough to hear, well, it's, we've always done it this way on Antucket, so that's how we do it, right, like, a million times a day. That's what we're fighting against, everyone's reason for why they don't want it, the change is gonna be a little bit different. But I think that's why. What we were just talking about, like the different forms, whether it's open town meeting, representative town meeting, town council. A lot of these questions have already been answered. We know the answers to these questions through. All of the towns in Massachusetts, any of them that have changed have had this discussion, have talked about it, and I think you could find. Discussions of forms of government, style that you are called, so you're blue in the face, find out the differences. Is. I think what it really comes down to for me is. For the people who are raising their hand as part of the legislature. Can you expect people to have the time, energy and effort to make the best decisions that they can? While being as formed as they can about the decision that they're making, and I think that's where. right now, we are asking too much of people to mine through a ginormous document to go through and understand what's in there. You're asking everyone to be experts in sewer and finances and fertilizer and water quality. It's just too much, right? It's outside of people's circles and comfort zones where increasing meeting frequency also gives the ability to have experts come and talk to about subjects and participate. And you're decreasing the effort level for people to do. And I think that's really the root of, to me, how you should be making decisions are making the best decision you can with best information you can with the best energy and intentions behind it. I think that's really part of the problem, isn't the number of times you beat. The expectations of of people who are making decisions and then the accountability that goes with it. Is you're gonna raise your hand. You gotta have the accountability that goes with it. And that, I think, is where some of the start of this.
So just to play devil's advocate for a second, if we stipulate that those are, that is one of the main primary issues is participation and folks not uh shouldn't be expected to know everything that's on a two hundred page warrant, et cetera. Then why not for us consider representative town meeting? Because in a way that would be, that would, in theory, right, there are trade offs to all these. Town council's not gonna, you know, I I don't think any of us should be under the illusion that if we switch to town council in five seconds, that we're not gonna trade a different set of inefficiencies for some other ones that aren't gonna be. Like, for for instance, uh, you know, when I was running, I talked about that that if Curtis Curtis's article passed, um, that it that would be an important community, uh, important conversation for the community to have. And I talked to a couple dozen people about it and they said, well, you know, that's that's not, that's not, that's gonna be horrible for Nantucketers because if you had, just for argument's sake, nine town counselors, then folks from off island are gonna go to their sconset rep or, yeah, I'm not picking on sconset, but their rep and they're gonna and then in therefore off island interests, this this is not my words, off island interest would have more sway on a town council, right? And so you can look at that and that may be not true, but that that's just one little piece of what's out there. Um, so so I think after, after thinking about this for a while, I know Curtis's article doesn't um, excuse you say that, and and Joe, what you said about about that. But to me, as a, just as a voter, right, I think that we should at least talk about representative town. And if that's not the will of the committee, it's not the will of the committee. Um, but but to me, there are some pluses to representative town meeting that may um, may outweigh the benefits, excuse me, the 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 detriments, potential detriments of a town of going all the way to a town council. And quite often, uh, Mr. Dutton, the the um town manager in Bridgewater or the Collins Center can tell us this, but quite often look, look, doing some research on this, it seems a lot of towns will do representative town meeting as an interim step. You know, can you look at that both ways? Well, no, why not you go all the way or like whatever, but but there are, there are a lot, there's a lot of from from what I can tell, that there there is history of other towns doing that as an interim step for whatever reason.
Well, no, I I one hundred percent agree. I I I think you have to do that analysis, so ultimately prevail with any change of town meeting, right? Because you you can't leave questions on the table. If someone comes in and found meeting and says, well, did you guys look at representative town meeting? And if you say no, well, you're you're losing votes in the room. People are gonna say they didn't do their job, right? Like, that's the thing. And I I I think part of what's gonna be the hard part of this is when you get to the end, creating the a a charter document, it it it's not hard, right? There, most of the towns in Massachusetts have one. You can find your form of government and make it work, make it an attorney will 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 make work. But getting to that decision point for people and prevailing that way, you can't have anything outstanding. And I think we've seen it so many times here where there's a question that's left out there, a question that's dang like. And if it, we've even seen stuff pass town meeting, then lose the ballot box for that reason, like Manic is the perfect example. There are just too many questions and unknowns. That when the voters got to the ballot box, it got crushed and it rolled out at town meeting with a hugely positive vote, right? So you can't, you can't leave an issue unaddressed or unanswered. And I think identifying all of those is is gonna be difficult, but it's something that we're gonna have to do.
Sorry, go ahead, Charlie.
Trying to keep inventory here of we have the constraints, which will be the complaints, let us say. And there's obviously a version to try uh to uh change. There are people who love the the democracy and love the entertainment of that evening or a couple of evenings. And then as you just decided, people are gonna say, well, I want a different form. I want representative versus what we're talking about here. So I think, no matter how we deal with those constraints, and we will have to deal with you need to, but it say, what are the facts? What what is the change going to give me? And that's where I get to, we have to be able to sit around the bonfire and tell stories. We lost grants, we lost ten million dollars, we lost a hundred million dollars of opportunity because we have a slow form of government. This new form of government, we'll fix that, whatever those numbers might be. We are inefficient. We spend more of your taxpayers' money because of the former government, whatever those numbers are. And we gotta go down these things. We do not have immediate accountability. We have, we can start going down, I don't know, eight or nine or ten things. But I believe, if you wanna sell through these constraints or complaints or, you know, change problems, we are gonna have to have specific benefits. And I love American history and I love the Federalist Papers. But if we start talking about this former government, that former, you're gonna lose ninety percent of your population. You've got to break this down ultimately to what is it tangible that this is going to do differently? By the way, I'm I'm in favor of doing it differently. I see lots of problems.
So I'm late, but I thought I was supposed to be on because he sent me an email this morning.
Anyway.
Okay, I can sign off then. That's fine.
That was, yes, she's the alternate to Donna.
Um, and I I too may be jumping the gun to how the heck are we gonna sell this once we figure out the right way to go? But sometimes I find that if you really in granular fashion define a problem and define what the solution is, you're trying to reverse engineer it too. If we can do that, then your pathway's a lot easier.
Caroline?
No, go ahead.
No, I was actually risen.
So just like a process comment. I think we're we're saying, yes, we can delineate all the things that would be the resistances that people are talking about. So that we, we are essentially then respecting those feelings and thoughts because we're trying to sell it to the voters. And for me, uh, boiling down what you were saying, Jeff, that is to increase our trustworthiness because we are, we are saying, yes, we know about all of these things and we are thinking about how that affects um, the, when we make a recommendation, we're thinking about how that affects people. Um, you were, you were going back to Curtis's um thumbnail sheet that we saw today, which is what are all the ways, what's the elevator pitch? And all the the reasons that we should do this. So I see those as two different things. And just like Curtis had the piece of paper, maybe we could also just come up with the piece of paper of the things that people are going to be worrying about and losing and missing. Um, and Bo, I love what you said about, I mean, absolutely fascinating to think about um the origins of this and the symbol of this and because people may not be thinking about that top of mind, but it can symbol symbolic stuff is what people are, that's what informs people's emotional um stance and what they're gonna get behind and sometimes very often what they vote on. So I think our group should be hearing about all of that because I think that will really help us to understand more deeply. And that is our responsibility to to understand more deeply. And of course, I think we have to take the time to do that. I mean, it's just time. And if we wanna add a meeting for special, you know, field trips or having people come in and talk to us, maybe that will help. Obviously, some of the group has anxiety about how long this has taken to get off the ground and you know, maybe we need to have some special meetings ourselves to get up to speed. But I do think it's just gonna take some time.
So what is, I mean, we're we're starting to run sort of towards the end of our fall out of time here. Um, and I think we've kind of moved on to at least I've been writing notes about what are potentially uh agenda items for the next couple of meetings. Um, and some of the things I've written down and maybe the rest of you have some other ideas, but it sounds, it sounds to me like, and I thought Hillary's suggestion was a good one. We probably ought to get, get ourselves some education on the different, the four or five different forms of government, I think there's four. Um, this one, thanks Curtis. So let's go over the basics, the four basic forms of government, what are the pluses and minuses, make sure we're all on the same page. Um, I think that, you know, getting Michael Dutton and um uh, and maybe the the Collins Center, some people to to talk to us to a couple of meetings about their experience makes some sense so that we kind of see the path that other towns have taken. Um. And I I also think it would be worthwhile, we could summon from, whether it's Libby or someone from the town here to talk about, let's let's get back and make sure we're all on the same page in terms of, how does Nantucket operate? How is Nantucket organized? Um, who are the primary exec, you know, managers and the executive side of the government? What does the select board do? I think it makes sense that we all be on this, on the same, on the same page for that. Um, so I would propose, if you know, Jeff, you know, I I we can we can, we can sort of uh compare notes, but in terms of some of these outside speakers and then um again, if anybody else has has some I I issues they'd like to bring up, we can put those on the agendas as well. Chairman.
I I very much would like us to define the problem in a grand in the basis. And that is, what is it we're seeking to solve? We, and and from what I know, our town government wasn't flexible enough and we've lost a whole bunch of grant funding on different things. That's what I've heard in the finance committee. That we would like to solve. We would like to solve, make government more efficient in some form or fashion. We'd like to make it more accountable, whatever these issues are, but I think we must lay out five or ten things we are going to solve for. In other words, this entire exercise of changing government, that's great. But what is it going to do for the 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 political entity? Or the individual taxpayer? And we haven't, we have not addressed that. And I'm sorry I keep beating on that, but to me, that's the root issue there. And you need to unpackage.
Let's set it up for an agenda. Uh, hang on, let let the committee members first, Hillary, then I'll get to you, Rachel.
Um, so I sort of just through the conversation here in my own notes, sort of, you know, why stick with what we have? So why keep annual town meeting and then the why not list? And obviously, the why not list is what we're focused on. And Curtis has sort of already done that, so why not? And then added from some other input and part of our conversation. And then from that list, I think we'll probably realize that why not is why we're here. And then which one representative or council fits meeting all of those, solving our why nots essentially. And then that kind of gives us the groundwork for what our PR is and how we shape the conversation to say why we want town council and why representative doesn't work or vice versa. So it sounds to me like that's defining the problem, but in a more boxed simplistic way. Is that what you're sort of saying?
I I think that is a very good approach. I I just get back to in many complex problems that I've seen is people don't necessarily unpack the issues. We get down to what it is. And given that we're gonna have to sell this eventually, you're gonna have to sell around the campfire, you're gonna tell a story, you're gonna be at a dinner party. And someone's gonna say, okay, you go through this huge exercise, what's the relevance? What do you seek? What what are you accomplishing? What's changing? What's what's relevant to me? Why did we go through this eighteen month exercise? Well, gonna save some money. We're gonna find federal and state money we didn't find. We're going to make things more accountable. You know, we, you need to break it down to its essence. I know it's like the great communicator, Bill Clinton, but he was pretty good at that. You got it? And even though it may be completely obvious for all of us, unpack it.
Curtis, just a comment for what it's worth, I would invite everyone to go online and look at a Barstool town council meeting. You can do it, just dial in. And you'll see the efficiency with which the um meeting is run and how they're prepared. So sometime when you're bored over the holidays, just because they're all online, you know, you don't have to go the day, they're on Thursday nights, but you don't have to go on Thursday, just look at a couple of months, look at the way they move through things.
It's really good for representatives, how many people want to.
Yeah, you can do that too.
Yeah.
Well, Brookline is is the biggie. That's where Hillary is.
All right, uh Hillary, sorry, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you so much. Um, so I wanted to just make a couple of comments. The first is about the grants. Um, I don't know what happened at the airport or at the water company, but I will tell you that at the historical commission, we were applying for a grant and we were told by people in the town that we'd missed the deadline, we couldn't agree for the, to the match, we wouldn't be able to apply for the grant, we had to wait a year. And we went to the grantor and we explained that we had a town meeting and the town meeting wasn't gonna happen at this period and, you know, could they have any flexibility? And the answer was absolutely, we have lots of municipalities that have town meeting and we understand and we're totally willing to work with you. So again, I'm not saying that um that's always the case, obviously, but you know, I I think that there are many, many municipalities that have town meetings and they still manage to get grants. So I would just be a little, um, I just want to be a little bit devil's advocate and share a personal story that I know was true because I went back to that town official and I said, guess what? We don't have to wait, they're fine with it. Um, and we got the grant. Um, I I I wanted to suggest as far as um what might be useful to the deliberations. Um, I just, I'm wondering if there are any peer reviewed journals, um, peer reviewed um uh, scholarship that might be useful because we're talking about not just government, but also like decision making. What kinds of groups make the best decisions? And I don't just mean your group, I mean, like, is it a group of two hundred and fifty people? Is it a group of twelve people? What are some of the pros and cons? And um I have a lot of access because I'm a grad student now, so I have like full access to Boston University Library and I would be happy to look for those. Um, I don't know what I'll find, but maybe I could send them to Joe if, and he could decide if they're useful. Um, I also wanted to mention the meeting at the select board that Libby had. Um, it was even before ATM where she invited, we had John Giorgio and then we had three different um representatives from other towns. Do you, has everybody seen that recorded meeting?
Yes. I can send that, I can send that to you if you want.
It is, uh, it's must see TV. Um, it was super interesting and I think it'll catch everybody up on a lot of stuff.
Yeah, like ten months ago, nine months.
Yeah, in February, maybe. Um, and then um, the last thing I wanted to mention was, I just, I've only heard one criticism of a town council in this whole meeting, and I think there are lots of criticisms of town councils. So I just wanted to encourage everybody as you go through this, be devil's advocate, you know, and everything has pros and cons, absolutely everything. So I think you'll win over more folks with whatever you decide and you'll also make sure that you're challenging your own assumptions. If you have a long list of um negatives and you decide that the positives outweigh the negatives, not just that you're only looking at positives, so. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Hillary. Um, any final comments from the uh committee here? All right, um, I will get back to everybody with uh some suggested dates for Wednesdays going out into the future. And I will try to uh tighten up my notes and get back to with uh a number of suggested uh agenda items for the next two or three meetings, shall we say? And Jeff and I are gonna be calling the MMA and uh the Collins Institute and see if we can line up some folks to to speak to us. Um, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Um, I'll go this, I'll go this way, Tom.
Hi.
Caroline?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Hi, Jeremy, Jeff?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Thank you all. Have a Merry Christmas, a great holiday and we'll see everybody in the new year. I'm sorry, Donna.